The Naperville Park District Conferencing Center. Please stand by, you'll be joined in shortly. If you are the host, press star now. Otherwise, please wait and you will be joined into the con. Please enter your PIN followed by the pound or hash. Thank you. You are the only participant in the conference.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Naperville Park District Board of Commissioners. Today is Thursday, March 25th, 2021. Time is 7:32. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the right, the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, with which it stands, one nation, united in God, in this law, with liberty, and justice for all.
Bridgette, call the roll, please.
President Riley?
Here.
Vice President King?
Here.
Commissioner Carlson, not in. Commissioner Egan?
President.
Commissioner Janner?
Here.
Commissioner McBroom?
Here.
Commissioner Todd?
Here.
Director, we need a motion to.
Move to allow remote meeting participation of Commissioners Carlson and Egan as allowed per Section 7 of the Open Meetings Act.
A motion is second. Bridgette, call the roll.
Vice President King?
Yes.
Commissioner Janner?
Yes.
Commissioner McBroom?
Yes.
Commissioner Todd?
Yes.
President Riley?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is the Tax Abatement Ordinance.
Move to approve Orance 994, abating a portion of the tax here to four levy for the year 2020 to pay debt services in Naperville Park District's outstanding general obligations, limit tax refunding park bonds, Series 2020.
Second.
A motion is second. For discussion, Sue Stange, would you like to start us off?
Thank you, President Riley. As you recall, we had talked about this ordinance, well, for months now since we put the 2021 budget together. And at that time, just a little history to wrap it up and close the loop. When we were working on the budget, based on just what a rough year it's been for everyone, we built into the budget to hold our property tax levy flat to last year's amount. That was our goal when we, when we put the budget together. So we were able to do that for 2021. And if you recall, it was a two-step process to do that. The first step was to regu- to file a levy like we typically do every year. We took CPI and we took more to make sure that we captured all of the growth. And just earlier this week, I received final numbers, EAV numbers, from DuPage and Will County. So with those numbers, we were able to calculate a new levy request coming down to what we asked for last year, actually $5,000 less. So you try and get it right on, but literally because the two counties levy with differences and how they extend their taxes, we're really close. So after approval for your consideration tonight, once we do that, it's about $396,100 that we would be reducing our levy request. So our taxes will be flat to last year. What that means for each individual homeowner will vary depending on the assessment of their home. So if their assessment did not go up, our tax rate is going down. They would see a decrease in their taxes. If their, if the homeowner stayed exactly with the increase in EAV, it would be flat. And in some cases, if your EAV jumped up a lot, you put an extension on or did something different, your taxes could go up a little bit. So that's something the district doesn't control. We just control what we ask for. But for the majority of homeowners, their taxes are going to remain flat or slightly decreased for the 2021 taxes that they're going to be starting to pay. So with that, all that's left of this process is tomorrow I would file the ordinances with DuPage and Will Counties. They recalculate our levy as they're putting the tax bills together.
Thank you. Any discussion, my commissioners?
Now, I saw a say.
Thank you. I have two motions of substitution, Dirk, and I think, I think I'm probably better off presenting them separately and then, than putting them together because if one fails, they both fail, correct? If I combine the, the motion, assuming they got a second?
That would be correct.
Okay. So my first motion of substitution is to stay true to the original budgeting process and make the, make the $396 really the $500,000, which is what we advertised in the, in the budgeting section. If there's a second out there for that.
Just so from the numbers that I put together, our estimate was 407,000.
There's no second, we'll move on.
Okay. My second motion of substitution is to make this, make this $396,000 permanent. We can certainly afford it. There's no reason to give and then take back next year. So if there's a second for that, we certainly can champion the people. If other districts can give back 10 million bucks, we certainly can give back 396,000.
Is there a second?
Well, Sue, that sounds laudable, but is there any way to know? It seems like it would be an arbitrary number, wouldn't it? We don't know what, wouldn't know how to calculate the abatement for future years, correct?
You mean going forward?
Just for point of order, discussion would come after a second. So still seeking a second. There being no second, we'll move on. Bridgette, call the roll, please.
Point of clarification, President Riley, did someone want to make, have any discussion on the original motion? Because we never, Commissioner King, I thought you might have had some discussion on the orig- on the original motion because we went right to the substitute motions, but never got in any discussion on the original motion.
Thank you.
It really was a statement. Thank you, Bridgette, and thank you, President Riley. I just want to commend Sue and Jeremy and Ray as well, too, for your leadership on this thing. It really is a great honor to be on the Finance Committee, learning from you guys and with Josh as well, too. You learn so much from you guys and you do a great job and great stewards of our, our money. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll have a roll call, Bridgette.
Vice President King?
Yes.
Commissioner Janner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carlson?
Yes.
Commissioner Egan?
Aye.
Commissioner McBroom?
Yes.
Commissioner Todd?
Yes.
President Riley?
Yes. Next is the Consent Agenda. The Executive Director warns that all consent agenda items, reports, and memoranda comply with board policy. Bridgette, would you read the items?
Item 4.1, approve March 11, 2021, regular meeting minutes. And item 4.2, award the contract for the Maywatz Park Trail Innovation Project to Innovation Landscape, Inc., in the amount of $53,030.25.
Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda to be considered separately?
Move to accept agenda items 4.1 through 4.2.
Second.
A motion is second. Any discussion? Bridgette, call the roll, please.
Vice President King?
Yes.
Commissioner Todd?
Yes.
Commissioner Carlson?
Yes.
Commissioner Egan?
Aye.
Commissioner Janner?
Yes.
Commissioner McBroom?
Yes.
President Riley?
Yes.
Move to approve consent agenda items 4.1 through 4.2.
Second.
A motion is second. This is a voice vote. All on paper, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion is carried. Next, we move on to item number six, new business and discussion items. And the first item that we have on our agenda is the Gold Star Memorial Project. And Bridgette, I believe we have some speakers lined up to address the board.
I have Ms. Jennifer Sloan.
Can everyone hear me? Okay. Good evening, my name is Jennifer Sloan. I've been welcomed by your committee before, thankfully, to speak about the Gold Star Memorial. Just a brief overview to kind of refresh your memories. The Gold Star Memorial is a monument in honor of all those families that have lost a loved one. It is to honor the families. The approved location for this is in Veterans Park. Our budget, our projected budget for the cost of this 25-foot wide, six-foot tall granite memorial is 77,000. To date, we've raised about 40,000 of that, 35 from CICA funds, and then about five from private donations. It is my understanding that there are some additional funds available that we are seeking this evening to have approved by the committee. And of course, this would help put us closer to that goal of 77,000. We do have some aggressive fundraising campaigns in place that are going to be taking off shortly here, but this would allow us to keep on track to have our monument built in a timely manner. Hopefully this summer, at the latest, fall, fall at the very latest, hopefully by this summer, if we're able to obtain the funds in the next few months. If any of the board members have questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Next speaker.
Mr. Ron Amato?
Thank you. Good evening. I'm here on behalf of Century Walk. Brandon Bobowski is out of town, but he sends his regards. I'm a member of Century Walk's Long Range Plan Committee. First of all, I'd just like to thank the Park District Board for all the partnership that it's had with Century Walk over the years on various projects, including most recently the firefighter memorial, Ladder of Light, which was just completed last year. This project, the Gold Star Family Memorial Project, will be a great addition to Veterans Park. And as Jennifer mentioned, we've received about $40,000 in funding through the CICA Committee, CICA Commission. But the additional financial support from the Park District would definitely go a long way toward helping this project come to fruition. And I think it'll be a great project for Naperville. I think it'll be another great opportunity for Century Walk to partner with the Park District. And I appreciate all your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more speakers on that topic? Anything else to?
No. President Riley, other than what I corresponded with the board earlier this week about this discussion item, the staff has identified $10,000 that we have found in savings. And Eric, you could probably speak to the specific project. But we think it's a worthwhile expenditure of our funds, well, not our funds, but basically the taxpayers' funds, to go toward this project in Veterans Park. So we'd be supporting it, but ultimately, you are the ultimate decision-making panel here.
So this appears as an action item on the future agenda?
Correct. And if you want to mention, Dirk, how this would all work as far as the public-private partnership?
It would, we would enter into a partnership with the Century Walk, as we've done on other things. That's sort of an agreement to make this happen. That way, we make sure the expenditure of the funds stays mission-focused for the Park District and for the purposes for which the money was received.
Thank you.
Erica, I know you, I wouldn't mind hearing the, where you decided to pull the funds from. I know you were going to give us a little bit of commentary there. I'd be happy to hear that.
Absolutely. So the plan for 2021 at Veterans Park, several improvements, including the replacement of flagpoles, renovation to pavers, light fixtures, and the apron that connects the roadway to the access drive and the parking lot. We budgeted a total of $50,000. At this time, the project is tracking by at least $10,000 under budget. So that's where the $10,000 would come from.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
President Riley? It was a little bit hard to follow the numbers there. Bridgette, maybe you could just throw them out. We're throwing in 10,000 plus 50, is that what I understood?
No.
Yeah, just to, just to clarify, so in total, in the 2021 capital budget for the Veterans Park improvements that we had planned to have completed this spring before Memorial Day, we had a total of $50,000. At this time, we're looking at at least 10,000 remaining that we're building the project under budget for a little under 40,000. So that means 10,000 is available for these improvements if the board chooses to pursue for the Gold Star Families Memorial Monument.
Is that all that Brand needs, or is there something more to pull this off?
President Riley, what I heard the speaker say was that they've already raised a significant amount. This would move them towards their goal, and then they're actively fundraising as we speak, are about to kick off a fundraising campaign. And so I think, from what I heard, our contribution of $10,000, if we go in that direction, would just move them closer to their finish line, closer to their goal. And I see one of the speakers nodding yes, so seems like that'll just give them some of the momentum that they need to keep this moving forward.
Thank you. Does that clarify for you, Bill?
Yeah, I think so. I just, if we need, there's nothing more important than the men and women who provide the freedom that we enjoy in the political debates that we certainly have. So anything to honor them, and if we can support Brand with more, I'm all for supporting this effort.
Thank you.
President Riley?
Yes.
So just so we're clear, we'll bring an ordinance, something for the next meeting for you all to vote on then, since we have a consensus, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Next item then is the Cloud Creek Greenway Shoreline Restoration.
Yes, thank you. So the contract for restoring the shoreline in the central portion of Cloud Creek Greenway is planned to be presented to the Park Board for consideration and approval in April. The scope of work for this project includes the stabilization of shoreline extending through Cloud Creek Greenway. This work will be part of two of three phases for the creek as its shoreline that runs from Book Road to Pradle Drive. The 2021 improvements focuses on the central 600 feet along both sides of the creek. The stabilization work involves removal invasive and undesirable trees and shrubs, minor grading to ensure a stable slope and insulation of native seed from the shoreline back to approximately 30 feet. The project slated to begin in the spring as weather permits with the intent to reach substantial completion this summer.
Thank you. Any, any questions or comments? Thank you. Next item is also yours, the Brooks Crossing Retention Basin Improvements.
Thank you. As identified in the weekly packet memo, this multi-phase improvement project is a main priority for the Naperville Park District. The project will greatly minimize erosion, enhance water quality, improve habitat for wildlife, and reduce maintenance costs in future years. And the project is directly aligned with the district's core values, including environmental education, stewardship, and sustainability. Phase one of the project consists of invasive tree and shrub removal along the eastern edge of the shoreline, de-watering the pond, mechanical dredging, and restoration work. Phase one is part of a five-phase plan. Permitting agencies, including the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, approve all phases of work as part of one improvement package. Remaining phases will be implemented in subsequent years as budget dollars permit. Last year during the design phase, the entire project was estimated at $1.3 million to execute over several years, and we're looking at 2021 through 2024. Essentially spreading the work out over time in manageable portions while looking to take advantage of economic economies of scale when possible. Also, the district conducted the bid openings for phase one of the project on March 9th, received three bids. After the bid opening, staff and the project engineer identified that the bid prices exceeded the target allowance amount of $325,000, estimated for the phase one work primarily due to the following. One, the project permit and bid drawings received and finalized based on input from permitting agencies after formulating the phase one budget amount in September of 2020, and the scope was expanded to purchase as much as possible in phase one. Also, the basement included GeoGrid Track Map for equipment stabilization on the east side of the basin. After the bid opening, staff suggested to the project engineer that since the work needs to be completed and dry, summer months per the permit, the preferred approach is to remove the map from the project and receive the disturbed areas in the off-seasons, which is not a concern. Two, uncertainties with fuel costs and dumping fees associated with settlement material being hauled miles away after draining down of filter bags on-site, which is all-weather dependent. Based on these unknowns and cost factors, staff is considering the approach of storing settlement on existing sled hills or and/or at large-scale parks in the area versus hauling to dump sites. As next steps, staff is collaborating with the project engineer to revise scopes, including removal of the GeoGrid map from the project and the approach of storing settlement nearby at a Park District site in preparation for rebidding the project in order to deliver phase one within the 2021 target allowance amount established for the project. It is recommended by staff to reject the bids associated with phase one of the Brook Crossings Retention Base improvements and rebid the project next month with the plan to present a contract for the aforementioned work in May. The phase one project is still on schedule to commence this summer with the intent to reach substantial completion this fall.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Springbrook Golf Course renovation, phase one. Director Carlson?
Thank you, President Riley. Staff will be presenting.
Hey, Kevin. Sorry. There you go.
Staff will be presenting for consideration at the April Board Meeting a contract for the installation of the mainline drainage at Springbrook Golf Course. A memo detailing the renovations was included in your March 19th weekly packet. This project is part of the Golf Master Improvement Plan that was presented to the Board in 2018. Originally, this work at Springbrook was to be completed in its entirety this year, but the pandemic forcing some projects to be deferred, a decision was made to separate this project into separate phases. The first phase is planned for this fall. This will entail the installation of the mainline drainage throughout the golf course, helping to alleviate the chronic drainage issues that have plagued Springbrook. The low bidder for this project was Integral Construction, who has successfully completed several large and small projects with the district. However, their bid was over our planned budget of $375,000. In consultation with the bidders, it was determined the district's request to minimize the need to close the course during the work resulted in a more costly project to complete. However, staff has met with the architect and the contractor as working to value-engineer the project to lower costs and bring the project back under budget. Several items were identified that could be deferred to allow this project to be completed within or near our budget by providing the objectives of improving the drainage issues experienced on the golf course. The items to be deferred would be more efficiently completed when the course is closed in the following year. With approval, this work will begin in September, and will require some adjustments on the course to work around the contractors, but overall, impact to play will be minimal, which is one of the main goals of the project.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Thank you. Next is Ordnance 993, Declaration of Surplus Property. Director, oh, Tim.
So this evening, we'd like to present for discussion the option to surplus several items. A quick note on the fleet side of your board memo. Unit number 02 should be listed as a 2012 Ford Explorer Interceptor SUV instead of the 2009 Jacobson HR5111. And then also missing from the list, please include a 2008 Ford F Ford 50 four-by-four dump truck, truck number 129. So we've recently taken possession of the replacements for truck, truck 02 and trailer number 403. At the March 11th Board Meeting, a replacement for truck number 129 was approved and has since been ordered. Unfortunately, neither of the two trucks are considered roadworthy anymore and cannot be used any longer. On the parks end, the six bicycles listed were all collected as part of the Park District's Lost and Found Program and have been held for a minimum of 30 days. As is the case with all items submitted to our Lost and Found, the bicycles are recorded in our central database on the district's shared computer network, and all went unclaimed. Finally, on our rec department, or from our rec department, there are various props, accessories, and clothing items from our dance program to be surplus. Additionally, Director Wilson indicated that the owners of the 95th Street Center have a party interested in leasing the kitchen area that we currently occupy. As such, we'll need to remove all of the kitchen items from within. All efforts are being made to redistribute as much as possible to the other departments and facilities within the district. However, we would look to sell or donate any remaining items.
Thank you. Anything else, Brad? Questions or comments? Thank you, Tim.
The kitchen, the items, we, it's, we had a cooking class, but basically that class is, can you kind of clarify why we're getting rid of the kitchen?
Correct.
Oh.
So the kitchen, earlier or late last year, we approached the board about reducing the amount of square footage that we lease at the 95th Street Center. The kitchen areas was one of the areas that we removed from the lease just based upon the lack of programming, the interest that we were gaining with the culinary classes at that site. So as Tim mentioned, the owner has someone else interested in repurposing the room and would like us to remove the equipment that's in there.
Yeah, because when we first got to 95th Street site, we thought that kitchen area was going to be a real draw for people, and it simply didn't work out that way.
Correct.
Thank you for the clarification.
Anything else? Next, we'll go on to Department of Updates, Administration. Bridgette?
No report.
Finance? Sue Walvis has a report.
I have a quick report usually, and I do again. So we've been wrapping up our year-end audit. That is going very well. We can look forward to that presentation soon. As you know, we've been working on the tax levy. That's just been the past week, and we started 2022 budget prep with the team. So we're not into numbers, but we're definitely into scheduling and starting to plan for next year's budget. And then just the regular, everyday finance stuff that goes on.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Sue? Thank you. Golf?
Thank you. A couple of things from golf. Happy to announce that we were able to open the golf courses a little earlier than planned with the warmer than weather, normal weather we had. The range at Springbrook opened up first on February 27th, which was quite a sight of seeing dozens of golfers hitting golf balls out into six to eight inches of snow. We opened Naperville's Golf Course on March 8th and then followed that up with Springbrook on March 17th. Tea times so far have been filled on any day the sun is out or temperatures have been anywhere near 50 degrees. Our membership program has also been busy this year. For 2021, we increased our membership fees by 5%, but that hasn't slowed any interest in our Brooks Links memberships. We have already surpassed last year's numbers and our 2021 budget by more than 20%. We've sold out of our adult memberships for the year, and our junior memberships are still available, but those are also in high demand right now and will be limited. And capacity has also been reached for our first tournament of the season, the Partner Best Ball on April 10th. We have 100, over 120 players signed up so far and several wait-listed three weeks before the event. Also, on the courses, on the course maintenance side, the courses came through the winter in good shape, and the staff has been busy cleaning up and preparing things for the spring season. The warm weather and hopefully a little bit of spring rains tonight will help things continue to keep growing. And with that, we've begun to get our mowers out, and we've made our first cut of the season. The golf staff in the clubhouses have been very busy the past few weeks preparing for the transition to our new software and our point-of-sale system at our golf courses, four-up. Online training for the staff began in early February, and we'll move to in-person training this weekend as we proceed to a final switch over this Monday. Also, part of the change is the updating of our golf website. Golf and marketing staff have been overseeing the design of new website with our provider, looking to improve the website appearance and functionality and building on our success with our online store. with our online store. Look for the new website to also be rolled out this weekend. And finally, our Junior Golf Extravaganza, Golf-a-Palooza, is back after being shut down last year. This year, we have scheduled Golf-a-Palooza for the 12:00 PM on Saturday, April 17, at the Springbrook Golf Course Practice Facility. This event's going to allow staff to promote our Brooks Golf Academy lessons and programs to kids and their parents while providing a fun introduction to golf, all for kids ages 5 to 17. There will be no charge for this event, but with limits on capacity that we have right now, we are requesting participants register, which will open on April 3. The afternoon will include opportunities to hit balls, chip, and putt, and the professional staff will be on hand to provide quick tips and encouragements. For the kids, there'll be games, prizes, and free hot dogs and beverages, and parents can check out all the golf equipment and get information on program geared towards their kids. We expect a fun afternoon for all.
Thank you. Any comments or questions for Kevin?
Yeah, Kevin, on the, on the memberships being sold out, what dictates the cap for that? I mean, why, why wouldn't we be able to take more? Is it, is it capacity or what dictates the cap on memberships?
It's a little bit of both. We look at a capacity as how many members we want to have and then still have most of our prime times available for the public golf. We look forward, and we actually look back a little bit at last season, and with public golf and daily fee golf increasing so much, we didn't want to cap our, or cap all our prime tee times with only member play. So the availability of all this time for our public is our key for all that.
So obviously, you feel like we're at the sweet spot, like if we increase to 10%, you feel like that would upset the scheduling thing and everything?
Easily, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any others?
Our burnout tee times are finished for this year, at least the signups. We'll have some availability if people are still interested. We are right now at the same level we were last year at both golf courses. We had a couple of groups dropped out, but then on the flip side, we had some groups fill back in. Yeah.
Thank you. Next is Human Resources.
A couple of highlights from the HR area. Currently, part-time and seasonal hiring is underway. If you are approached in the community, which I know that a lot of times you often are, please direct individuals to our website. We have an employment page, and everything is posted there. In the realm of employee wellness, we are finally, after a year hiatus, resuming employee-only fitness classes. We've got two different styles of yoga classes and a cycling class for staff to do on their lunch hour. And then as of tomorrow, Eileen is out, and Bridgette and I will be leading the CAPRA initiative for our reaccreditation this year. The self-assessment was submitted today, so we're good to go there, but we're going to have continued communication with our visitors to arrange for any of the Zoom meetings and things along those lines that they may need along the way. Our actual virtual visit will be at the end of June, and we do expect Eileen to be back at that time. So we will do the dirty work, and she can swoop in and, and take all the glory, I guess. Any questions for me? No? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Information Technology. And don't forget to hit the button.
Just kidding. So as we learned from 2020, it was a very tumultuous year in regards to technology as well as kind of making us more, be more in tune as to what are some of the things that we can address within our network and our technologies. So the first half of this year is really being focused on off-cloud backup, which is a true location in case something were to happen at the administration building, which, you know, we did unfortunately have with the cooling system, so we're looking at to address that as well. Basically, we're just looking at all the redundancies that we can get within that facility. And also, moving forward, disperse a lot of those, you know, we, we keep saying at the leadership team meetings, don't put all your eggs in one basket. So we're trying to install some of that infrastructure now at a lot of the different facilities so that everything's dispersed, and if we get or lose one facility, we're not completely down. So that's really what the focus has been, and now as we get ready to open up facilities, the focus is obviously on supporting, you know, those operations.
Anyone have any questions before that? I'd just like to say, Omar, I commented several times previously on all the work that you've done, setting up the meetings for us, and, you know, this wasn't really part of your original job assignment, but you've done a, you've done a great job getting us, you know, in a position where we can, you know, live stream the meetings. That's a project I know took months to work on, but in the midst of that, there were several large-scale threats on our IT, and that's where your focus was, and we were able to avoid some significant problems that happened with others. So again, thank you for, thank you for that.
Oh, thank you. I'd love to take all the credit, but it's really, you know, the team and, you know, the rest of the leadership that has helped along, so thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Did you shut the button off?
Yes. No. I locked it on.
Okay. Next, Samara Marketing Communications.
Thank you, President Riley. Good evening, everybody. I've got two updates. First of all, we've got the ribbon cutting for Wolf's Crossing Community Park coming up on Thursday, May 20 at 5:00 PM. Wolf's Crossing has been open since October, and, gosh, I live out in that area, and there's so many people that have been enjoying that park. It's really wonderful to see, but we do want to have a formal ribbon cutting to officially open the park. So May 20, hopefully, we're going to have great weather, nice warm weather where we can turn on the splash pad, because that will be the first day that that's going to operate. So that's pretty exciting as well. So it will be a pretty simple event due to COVID. It will be some remarks and a ribbon cutting, and then, of course, everyone can enjoy the park and all the great amenities that are over there. So we're looking forward to that day. The second thing I have, a little bit of show and tell, and I apologize at, whoops, your backs are to it. Hopefully, you can see that. Seeing as we're all anxious to get back to having fun and being active, especially with warmer weather on the horizon, after a highly unusual and difficult year dealing with the pandemic, we wanted to create an engaging way to encourage our community and residents to get back to engaging with the Park District and having fun and going to our facilities and events and all of that. So we've come up with the Park It in Naperville campaign. The campaign name itself has a double meaning. Park it, meaning stay in place or stay home, encourages people to become involved with the Park District's offerings. It's really our staycation campaign without saying the word staycation, which is overused. So the campaign is going to kick off very shortly with our spring look and carry through the rest of 2021, and you see it changes from season to season in color scheme and also the iconic representation. So as various recreation amenities or programs become available, we will change up that campaign over time. The purpose of the campaign is to highlight all of the great opportunities the Naperville Park District provides people throughout the year. They can enjoy being active, having fun, spending time close to home with family and friends, and this is just a manifestation of some of the things that we're looking to do, how it could look on the program guide page where there's a simple call-out, five things to experience for every season, and then on the right-hand side, some of the ways that some of our signage and posters can look throughout our facilities. Again, here are some more examples, our webpage, and again, with some ideas of things people can do and how it'll look on social media. So we're going to display it across our district marketing in a number of different ways, on the digital-only program guide, facility signage, social media, and hopefully, we're going to get people really excited about coming back to everything that we have to offer as an organization. That's it. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Okay, next, Park Police.
Good evening. As we move into what's already been a busy summer, we've already added a second day shift officer to our weekend patrols to increase our presence in the parks as the general public begins to emerge from the statewide COVID restrictions. This is about five weeks earlier than we did it in 2019, which is, I guess, the last quote-unquote "normal" year. I've recently met with the night shift city of Naperville Police Commanders, members of the Central Business District, and even the Visitors Bureau to discuss and explore options to address the sometimes overwhelming number of cars and motorcycles that have contributed to gridlock in the streets and park district parking lots in the downtown during the evening hours lately. We're also working closely with the city Naperville Police to vet protests and rallies as the permits are being submitted to both City Hall and our Park District admin offices. We are in the process of hiring four new part-time police officers that all have extensive prior law enforcement experience that should bode well for our department. As we move into the warmer weather, the park officers are not only being asked to drive through the lots, but to park their vehicles as well, get out on foot a little more often, and actually interact with the users in those parks. Another goal is to utilize our electric bikes and ATVs more frequently to be more visible presence on our bike paths and in some of our more obscure locations within our district. We've partnered with the DuPage County Faction of the National Alliance on Mental Illness and the Naperville Police Department's social workers for training on how to best interact with any persons in crisis that we may come across in our parks. These two resources will also be available for any officers in this department that might be dealing with struggles of their own. Lastly, as we begin to identify and schedule our yearly mandated training, we will be starting next month with every officer in our department attending an eight-hour class on fair and impartial policing through cultural competency.
Thank you. Any questions? Next, Parks. Tim.
So this week, staff started pumping down the beach in preparation of any maintenance work and routine preseason cleaning. We're coordinating with trades on the opening of our heated restrooms, including locations at DuPage Sports, Commissioners Frontier, Nike, and Pioneer Park. Crews will be moving turf blankets, and we're starting to work on our sports fields in preparation for all of the activities to begin in just a couple of weeks. And we finally received our prescribed burn permits back from the EPA and are just this week permitted by the city. We hope to be completing burns as soon as next week. Our nine-month part-time staff just started at the beginning of March, and we are in the process of reviewing applications and interviewing for our summer under-30 and six-month part-time staff.
Thank you. Any questions for you, Tim?
Just for the, some of the people that are here and then those that are listening at home, can you explain why we do these burns?
Sure. You know, in many of the areas, you know, the prairie burns obviously happen naturally for, you know, as long as we've been around in these areas, and the, the benefits of the rejuvenation of the areas, the nutrient replenishment, it helps eradicate several of the invasive weeds and species that, you know, we also look to, as we look to return our prairie areas more to a natural state. So there's a lot of benefit to it. It does look really cool when we do it, but, you know, there's actually a purpose behind it.
Thank you.
Hey, Tim, what's the, what's the communication plan on that? I mean, I remember, I don't think it was Naperville Park District, but I remember seeing social media where residents are alarmed when they see something burning out there. How do we, how do we communicate to the community when that stuff is going, when those controlled burns are happening?
Right. So that starts early in the year, and, you know, a list of the parks that are on the list to potentially burn makes its way to Sue Olmanson, who usually releases or puts out a press release, and then postcards are generally sent out to any of the parks bordering the area that we might burn. And then on our end, obviously, we inform our community relations staffs when the burns take place in case we get any phone calls as well as local fire departments. If there are schools or residents who do like to be, or would like to be notified in advance, we also do take a list and then reach out to them prior to starting those burns.
Social media might be another good platform to use, the district's channels, just to certainly want anyone to be alarmed out there with thinking something's burning down or whatever.
Great. They'll make sure we're looking into that.
Thank you.
Anything else? Next, Planning and Development. And I don't see any color aerial shots.
No, I'm sorry, not this evening. Actually, I have a very brief update this evening as it relates to planning and development. As we all know, in the first quarter of 2021, there were several contracts presented for consideration approval. With those contracts, we have quite a few capital improvement projects slated to begin in the upcoming weeks. So with the weather breaking entering in the spring, and now we're entering construction season, you'll start seeing more activity in our park system with respect to the development of capital improvement projects. Also, as Samara mentioned, the Wolf's Crossing Community Park ribbon-cutting event slated for Thursday, May 20. But in addition to that, we also have other ribbon-cutting events that will be planned later this year as it relates to playground renovations. So more information to share with respect to that topic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Recreation. Brad.
Yes, I have a few updates this evening. First off, we're preparing to adjust our operations based on the recent information released by the state, preparing to introduce a bridge phase. The bridge phase will allow for increased facility capacities and larger group gatherings for recreational offerings. Staff will continue to monitor the DCEO guidelines that are set for each of the industries as well to see if any further changes can be incorporated into the operation of our programs. We're also preparing for the start of the spring programs, which includes the return of the Naperville Youth Soccer League and the Premier Soccer Leagues with games. NYSS will play a modified five-game season this spring, starting in mid-April. At this time, we have over 2,500 players that are registered for NYSS, which actually exceeds our 2019 spring registration, where we had 24, 2,450 that were in the program at that time. 68 teams are currently registered in the Premier program, which is down from 2019 when we had nearly 100 teams in the program. Overall, program registration for the spring for all of our other programs is currently at about 50% of our totals from the spring of 2019. So we are still early in the process, and we are continuing to take registrations, so we anticipate that that will, will continue to rise. We're currently hiring a number of seasonal staff for summer program and facility operations. Our largest area of hiring is Centennial Beach. While we've not received guidance from IDPH on summer aquatics operations, we are working to hire staff needed to operate at full capacity. Staff is also preparing alternate operating scenarios in the event the state limits our capacity or the sizes of groups that can attend at the facility at one time. Information regarding the 2021 beach season will be communicated to residents once guidance is received from the state. We're also preparing to take registration for a wide variety of summer camp programs. Registration for our day camps and our summer school camp offerings are currently in progress. However, registration for approximately 120 different camp offerings will begin on April 6, and that information is getting set to be released for families to be able to see all of those different offerings that we have. And then finally, with the Ford Hill Activity Center, our memberships at the center have remained steady over the past five months. We currently have just under 3,000 of what we call paid fitness members, those who are not part of like the Silver Sneakers programs or the Prime programs, of which about 37% or 1,100 of those members are still on freeze at this point. But over the course of the past five months, those numbers have been very consistent with what we've seen. We're also preparing to reintroduce adult sports leagues indoors with volleyball that will begin in April, and staff is also working on basketball options for adult leagues. That's what I have.
Hey, Brad, on the beach, do you think there's any scenario where it would have to be an appointment-only kind of thing? It just seems like that's a general trend. It seems like everywhere you go now, you go to get your haircut, and you got to make an appointment, you got to make an appointment for everything. I mean, do you, is that being discussed as a possible scenario, or any of your peers in other park districts? I mean, I'm just trying to think, are we going to end up in an appointment type of situation with the beach? Is that feasible? Is that being discussed?
It is being discussed as one of the scenarios. If we were required to operate with small group gatherings or a certain number of groups that could be in the facility at one time, that we would need to essentially set up a reservation process or something, you reserve your spot for the day or for a certain number of hours. So that's a scenario that we're looking at, as well as utilizing our ActiveNet software to be able to carry that out for people to be able to reserve.
Yeah, that was going to be my follow-up question. I mean, do we have the infrastructure in place where if we find out, okay, we're opening in two weeks, and we need to have a, you know, the way state tends to communicate, there's not a ton of time necessarily to make adjustments? So are we prepared with the infrastructure to have a reservation system in place for a facility of that magnitude if we had to go to a reservation system?
There is a module within ActiveNet that we know that other park districts have utilized within their pool operations last year for those who were able to open that had the smaller pool settings. So yes, we do have a module that we would be able to work with and have a structure set. set up to be able to do it.
Right, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Brad? Thank you. Our next scheduled meeting is a regular meeting of the Board of Park Commissioners, April 8, 2021, 7:00 p.m. right in this room. We have no executive session, so next action item on our agenda is adjournment.
Move to adjourn the March 25, 2021 regular meeting.
Second.
We have motion and a second. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.